The June 17, 2021, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Ms. Anderson?
Here. Mrs. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: January 11, 2021, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Mr. Velez, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for the approval of the following closed session statement. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. Discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reason for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Please rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Ms. Anderson?
Here. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Madam President. On May 21, 2021, IFB 22-06 for plumbing supplies and materials; May 26, 2021, IFB 22-08, electrical supplies and materials; May 27, 2021, PSA Project 8676 Colonial Colonial Partial Roof Repair; June 2, 2021, PSA Project 8170 MJ addition at Matthew Jago School; June 9, 2021, IFB 22-01, athletic team supplies and equipment; and June 9, 2021, PSA Project 8170 JFKHS, John F. Kennedy Fieldhouse.
The public is invited to speak at the conclusion of each agenda. Comments at this time should be limited to the items on the agenda being presented. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Dr. Zager, please state for the record the superintendent's report for the month of May 2021.
Madam President, I have the following reports: student registers and fire drill report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and the reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. Dr. Zager, please introduce our student representative from Woodbridge High School.
Anarudha Madhava is an exceptional young man who works hard and dedicates his time to his academics as well as extracurricular activities. Anarudha is currently ranked number one in the class size of 382 students and has a GPA of 4.24. Anarudha is very involved with the school as well as his community. He is an active member of the Academic Competition Club, freshman mentorship program, the National and French Honor Societies. He also finds time to volunteer at the Teen Advisory Group and the Public Library. He has accomplished winning the gold medal in the National French Contest as well as the AP Scholar with Distinction Award. He plans to attend Rutgers University Honors Program in New Brunswick to study mathematics and particle astrophysics. Anarudha?
Thank you. For school number 14, the first grade reading celebration was held on June 7. The chorus and instrumental concert was held via Zoom on June 8. A magic show for all students was held on June 14, and the kindergarten celebration was held on June 15. On June 17, the grade five promotion ceremony was held. For school number 19, the first grade reading celebration was held on June 4. The PTO sponsored a picnic for fifth graders on June 9. The kindergartners moving up ceremony was held on June 15, and the grade five moving up ceremony was held on June 17. For school number 25, fourth and fifth grade students were inducted into the National Elementary Honor Society on June 7. The grade one reading celebration was held on June 10. The PBSIS grand prize drawing honored one student in grades K to 2 and one student from grades 3 to 5. The kindergarten celebration was held on June 14. The first grade reading celebration for remote students was held on June 15. The fifth grade promotion ceremony was held on June 15, and the fifth grade picnic and yearbook signing was held on June 16. On June 18, a kindergarten celebration for virtual students will be held. For Woodbridge High School, the competition cheerleading team placed first in the New Jersey State Cheerleading Championship. The dance team placed third in state in the Advanced Palm Division. Our yearbook was awarded the National Yearbook Program of Excellence Bronze Award. The 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee was performed live on May 3 through the 6 outside on the mayor's stage. The Drama Club held their annual award ceremony remotely via Google Meet on June 9. The Theater Department recognized our 14 graduating seniors with a senior spotlight featuring post-high school plans daily since June 1. Katie Nguyen placed second for the Plant Science Award at the Nokia Bell Labs North Jersey Regional Science Fair. Sarah Pajaro placed first for a Behavioral Science Award at the Nokia Bell Labs North Jersey Regional Science Fair, Journal of Emerging Investigators, and Exceptional Investigator Award at the NJRSF. Jonathan Slohoda received the NJRSF Innovation Award, ASM Material Science Award, and the USAID Science Champion Award. The American Sign Language choir created videos to share with the township and participated in the School 24 Autism Awareness Celebration. The ASO Honor Society students worked on a series of lessons for the staff at the Clark Whole Foods to aid the coworkers of a deck worker to have better communication. The ASO Honor Society students are also continuing to plan sensitivity training seminars for the local police and fire department on how to interact with the deaf. International Culture Club, along with the French Honor Society members, volunteered to share a book with Ross Street School students on World Book Day. 16 new members were inducted at the ceremony held outside in the stadium on May 19. The girls' tennis team were named the White Division Sportmanship Award winner. The football team and Coach Lasala were awarded titles as being Bote USA Today, Network New Jersey 2020 Big Central Conference Group Four Team of the Year, and the overall New Jersey Group Four Team of the Year. Our senior Ali Lee Jr. was named the Home News Tribune Player of the Year. Our senior Jordan Harris was named the Home News Tribune Defensive Player of the Year. Woodbridge Township Ice Hockey Coach Rotella was named the Star Ledger Greater Middlesex Conference Coach of the Year. Our senior bowler, Jordan Stufkin, was named second Team All-State by the Star Ledger. The competition cheer team, under the direction of Coach Gulix, won the New Jersey State Advanced Non-Tumble Championship. Girls softball won the White Division Championship. This is the first softball division title since 1979. The girls' spring track, coached by Coach Angatea and Coach Bradley, won the White Division Championship. Junior Melina Updale won the 400-meter hurdle championship in both the Greater Middlesex Conference Championship and the Nord II Group III State Sectional. Senior Stephen Darmola won both the shot put and the discus championship at the Nord III Group III State Sectional Championship. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a wonderful report, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the Board meeting if you like.
It would be an honor, but I have a religious activity that I need to attend.
Sure, no problem. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I would also like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Lotman, principal of Woodbridge High School, for coming out and to support your student tonight. We'll do the superintendent's agenda. Dr. Zager?
Madam President, I have 29 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
No motion. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments and questions from the Board? Are there any comments and questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Policy and planning, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following nine items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tamburello. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Curriculum, Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 13 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Good evening to the Board, and thank you. Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. On point number seven, I'd just like to clarification, for my own edification if nothing else, that the Board of Education approves the payment not to exceed $165,700 to iXL Learning for a site license, and that license is apparently related also to science and social studies. What exactly is that, and is any component of that also tied in with what's coming up for diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Dr. Zager?
Madam President, Mr. Maris, iXL is an online tutorial. It is in the core subjects, math, language arts, science, and social studies.
Okay, that's not, that's one part of the question answered. The other part was, within the social studies, is there any relation to the diversity, equity, and inclusion that's going to be part of the curriculum?
That I would have to check.
Would you please let me know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mrs. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Finance and insurance, Mr. Tamburello.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 18 items. This evening, I move for the adoption of the foregoing 18 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Tamburello?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Again, Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. Regarding point number nine, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the establishment of a capital reserve account in the amount of nine, I'm sorry, $6 million. Is that the standard amount that we hold in reserve, or is that a change from what we've had in the past?
Mr. Wolfman?
Madam President, Mr. Maris, that is a number that did change from a previous year, but there is no set amount or requirement for the amount that we put into capital reserve.
Am I wrong in saying I thought we had about $10 million in reserve at one point in time, and that had held for quite a few years?
Mr. Maris, I'd have to check the exact amount. I don't think it was quite that high, but we did have monies put into the reserve, and we have since done projects in the district.
Was there a recent time when that reserve was drawn down because of a non-payment or delayed payment from the municipality of the school board?
From the capital reserve, no.
Not from the capital reserve. What reserve was it then?
There's no reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
... by Jawatari Woodbridge. Are this money be transferred for reserve into the budget? Who signed for it?
What item number are you speaking on? What item number on the agenda are you speaking on?
This is the item Mr. Maris just talked about.
Can you repeat the question? Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, that reserved, the money was taken from reserve and put into the budget. Who signed for it? Who was the authorizing signature to transfer the money from the reserves into the budget, school budget?
Mr. Wolfman?
The money is moved based on Board approval. As far as who the signers of checks are, it is the Business Administrator, the Board President, and the Treasurer of School Funds.
The whole from school?
Could you repeat that, please?
The Board of Education.
The Board President signs all checks.
Okay.
And the Board votes on all transfers.
Okay, but who's signatures on it?
On the check?
Yeah.
The Board President, the Business Administrator, myself, as well as the Treasurer.
So there's more than one signature?
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Technology agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving one item.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Buildings and grounds agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following 15 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tamburello. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much. I want to recognize two things this evening. A big one, item number 13, we are awarding a construction contract for $8 million for the construction of the addition to School 28 as part of the March 2020 bond referendum. That will include really all new classrooms. I think it's, I apologize off the top of my head, I think it's about eight to 10 new classrooms. So that's a special thanks to you as members of the public. I just wanted to recognize the progress that we continue to make with our implementation of the bond referendum. And my second item I want to reference, and I thank you to Mr. Wolfman and your team. A couple of years ago, we did this. I call it the air conditioning audit, typically around May, June, and sometimes it's September. It'll be a little hot in our un-air-conditioned classrooms. A few years ago, it was about 50%. By this fall, I am pleased and very happy to represent that with the except, excuse me, all of our classrooms will be air-conditioned by the end of the summer. And that is also a credit to you as the voters as well, because you've supported our bond referendum, which not only purchased window units for the actual air conditioning, but at the four of our five middle schools, the electricity capacity in the school, the load, could not handle air conditioning. So we have upgraded that since last, excuse me, March of 2020. Wow, it's only last year. PSENG has manufactured custom equipment for us that will be installed this summer, if I'm not mistaken. I believe the buildings have to be completely shut down. The window units are in the classrooms, ready to be installed and turned on for September to make our classrooms fully comfortable for both our staff as well as our students. It helps with students with asthma. It just makes for a more comfortable learning environment. I want to thank the administration for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Yes, Tom Maris, Ford's. Just following up, the air conditioning system that you're putting in, I'm assuming that's going to have high HEPA filtration as well. I know there are a lot of concerns in the classrooms now and have been about the coronavirus or anything else that may come down, where the air conditioning or any ventilation system needs to be up to, I guess, a HEPA rating. Is that true in this?
Yeah, are the unit ventilators, I know, are equipped with the appropriate filters. I believe Mr. Wolfman or Dr. Zager, the Chair, are better versed than the terminology. HEPA, I don't know if it's the term, I think it's another term. MERV, simple word, MERV, I apologize.
Dr. Zager?
Madam President, so the electrical upgrades in the middle schools is just upgrading the electricity so we can install window units, which will have the HEPA filters?
Okay. With those, would that then reduce the requirement for masks if you have the higher filtration systems, which is one of the biggest problems? The latest indications from CDC and others are saying that with those types of installations, the high filtration, that the virus becomes far less of a problem and may even negate the necessity for masks.
Through the Chair, the air conditioning units are just for cooling the air. We have, all these classrooms also have the unit ventilators which circulate and filter the air, and those have the highest possible MERV rating, filters that we could put in them.
Okay, then the question's still in part valid as far as that, does that help negate the necessity of a mask?
The necessity of the mask is determined by the governor at this point. We were following their direction. The science would indicate yes, but there is no, this past year, there was no degree of filtration that you could have in a classroom that would require negating the mask. Masks are still required in the classrooms.
So it's safe to say it's unsettled science at the moment?
I'm sorry?
I said it's safe to say it's unsettled science at the moment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
John D. Rattarik Woodbridge, Mr. Harris, did you say four schools?
Yes, the four middle schools do not have, some of the classrooms are partially, excuse me, the schools are partially air-conditioned now, all the classrooms. The electrical upgrade will enable full classroom air conditioning.
Okay. There was talk about it, those schools would be air-conditioned.
Yes.
But what I'm really surprised, that in new schools, nobody could project it what's going to be in the future, because this is not just for the temporary, this is a big, big thing. How much additional cost is going to cost? How much is it going to cost?
On, with the actual window units themselves?
Whatever it is, yeah. To upgrade, what's the cost of it?
I apologize, I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't know, Mr. Wolfman has what the electrical upgrades or the units cost.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I know, I was looking at it before, but I don't recall that specific amount.
And when you said public service, do you talk about the upgrading the system or the wiring or whatever is to be done?
Yeah, the upgrade to the system, the receiving equipment.
Big, big bucks, right?
Zager?
You talk about big money again?
Yes, but it was covered under the referendum. We have an outline, I don't have my laptop on me, but it has an update on all the referendum projects, that's covered under the referendum.
But then when it's done, it'll be good for a long time. Of course, you're not going to have to do a couple of years again to upgrade it more and more and more.
I don't know if the load will necessitate that. We already have one-to-one devices and the air conditioning. I don't know if there'll be an additional upgrade necessary.
Yeah, thank you.
And if there is, we'll do it.
Roll call, Mrs. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
I'll be abstaining, item number one, yes on all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tamburello?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Transportation agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bordain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. Equity Commission agenda, Mr. Delapetro.
Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Madam President. The Cafeteria Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapetro.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tambarella?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Equity Commission agenda, Mr. Treewasser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Equity Commission Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tambarella?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tambarella?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving 37 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tambarella?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Cafeteria agenda, Mr. Delapetro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Cafeteria Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapetro.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Tambarella?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
I'll be abstaining in item four, item 31, in the name of Valerie Henderson, item 35, in the name of Michael Henderson, and yes on all other items.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Ms. Blackburn, do you have any recommendations?
No, not at this time.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the board?
Madam President? I'm sorry, Frank, go ahead.
Mr. Tambarella?
No, please.
Okay, he wants Mr. Delapetro to go first.
Last night was the eighth grade dance at Ford's Middle School. I'd just recognize that Albertus County of Royal Albert's Palace, he provided the hall and the food for the kids, and he sponsored the whole thing. The kids had a great time. There was over 150 kids there. You know, they had the DJ. It was, it was really nice to see. I'd also like to thank Popeye Chicken from Avonel. They donated all the chicken for the, for the dance. So again, I'd just recognize them also. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Zaga?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recognize Frank Delapetro for helping organize the eighth grade dance he just referred to. He's coordinated that dance when we really didn't know what dances were going to be like while we were still masked up and socially distanced. So Frank did a really nice job as a liaison between the Ford's Middle School and Royal Albert's Palace. So thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Mr. Tambarella?
Thank you, Madam President. And hopefully, the board will indulge me for a few minutes, if I may. I do have a small announcement. I've always admired the ideal of public service that our founding fathers intended for this country. Simply put, back in the day, they thought every good American would sometime, in someplace, and somewhere in their community serve two terms of public service. And as the saying went back then, you return back to the fields and tend to your crops. Well, I'm happy to say, and I'm honored to say, that I've served four terms on Wilbur's Township School District, but it's now time for me to return to the fields and tend to my crops, so to speak. So with that, I want to announce tonight that I will not be seeking reelection, that I intend to finish my term, which the voters, four times so kindly, voted me into office. And I am appreciative and always will be of that. I was appreciative of my time on the board. I want to announce tonight that, again, as of December 31st, will be my last day as a Wilbur's Township School Board member. And I am looking forward to the next six months. I'm looking forward to helping any way I can, return the district back to normal in September. But I'm looking forward to life after January 1st, quite frankly, and my work commitments, my family commitments. It's been a blast. I was honored to have served. I'm not going anywhere again. December 31st, 2021, will be my last day as a board member. And I will miss the glamour and I will miss the salary. That's sarcasm. But I leave with a full heart and open eyes and open arms to everyone here. It's been a blast. And again, I look forward to the next six months, working with you all. And I hope to have the opportunity in the future to say my thank yous and goodbyes. But tonight, I just wanted a few minutes to make that announcement. I did speak about it with my, with the team here, with my team. But now that the announcement is public, and I'm looking forward to continuing being in this community and helping out any way I can. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Tambarella. And I'll save my full comments to the end, but you are such an asset to the board, and we will definitely miss your presence.
Thank you.
Madam President?
December.
Mr. Treewasser?
I'm sorry.
December.
December, yes, we know.
Mr. Tambarella has definitely threw a monkey wrench in what I wanted to say, but, you know, certainly, you have truly been a loyal servant to the community, and I'm sure everyone will agree to that. But I wanted to recognize Mr. Harris as he was elected recently at the last New Jersey School Boards Association Middlesex County meeting as the legislative representative for our chapter, our group. And he's the first one that I am aware of that has been elected to a position of that nature in quite some time. So I just want to let everyone know that Mr. Harris is really, man is busier than anyone I've ever seen and keeps asking for more. So I just thought he deserved the recognition of his accomplishment. So thank you very much, Mr. Harris. ETO, you are truly, truly going to be missed.
Madam President?
Mr. Molnar?
As I decipher this Lyndon Baines Johnson moment that was bestowed upon us, I'm, I'm speechless. It's, we've been around a long time, ETO, and we saw a lot of things. So wow. I mean, you know what? Good for you. Good for you. All the best. And I'll comment more about this after I decipher it, but.
Thank you.
Nice curveball.
Unintended, but thank you.
That was my graduation speech last year to the kids, how to hit the curveball. And here I am, swinging, missing. So, but, congratulations.
Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Harris?
Thank you. ETO, I certainly had a little bit of a heads up. You and I have become best friends over the past nine years. We're very close. And I'll say some, I'll do a full, full synopsis on you, you know, at your last meeting, and make sure you get the, you're not a guy, a braggadocious kind of guy. So we'll make sure we recognize you properly for your 12 years on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'll reserve comments. I did want to recognize, you know, somebody else here this evening. It's either his last or his second-to-last meeting as our superintendent. Sorry, I brought up some comments that I thought was appropriate that I reflect on. Dr. Zaga and I have a bit of a connection. Our fathers worked together, are partners for a time as police officers. You worked with my mom for a time, and we started on the board effectively about the same time. I started in January of 2013, when Dr. Zaga became our superintendent. At the time, the district was, was going through a change. We had an abrupt turnover of our superintendent. And Dr. Zaga, I think the one challenge, among others, he faced was changing the paradigm from teaching to the test to teaching the curriculum. And I always appreciated that, and I thought that was the right path to take. And you always maintained on that path, even perhaps at the, at the result of test scores not, not remaining artificially high, because we do have a curriculum, and it's most important that our students are not just good test takers, but they are well-rounded, educated individuals. You know, shortly thereafter, you started a strategic plan, which I think all of us, for those who are serving in 2013, were a part of. The core goal that came out of that, that strategic plan was full-day kindergarten. And I think at the time, I thought, ah, you're crazy. We're not going to achieve it. And four years later, in partnership with the board and the administration and the mayor and the township, we made it happen through the March 2017 referendum that you, as the public and everyone up here, truly voted for. That resulted in not only full-day kindergarten with a new school building, the acquisition of St. Cecilia's building, but also the first new school building for the first time in 49 years. And then many other, many other things came of that as well, including the 1911 Wilbur's Middle School, which was fully rehabilitated and a spectacular school today. That was a $60 million referendum. You helped shepherd. Three years later, you shepherded another referendum, this time a little, little higher in weight, about $89 million. Again, in partnership with our, our friends in Town Hall, we made that happen. Another new elementary school will be built, two large additions. I mentioned one earlier this evening. Pods being connected, technology, security, HVAC, you name it, a dozen or so additional projects, including STEM. Something, I mostly focus on buildings and grounds and finance, you know, are my passion, but we never lose sight of the fact that we're here to educate our 13,000, 700 students. So I want to rattle off some of the accomplishments you've had in the areas of curriculum. And these are just a few of many. You've increased eight advanced placement participation scores as well have gone up. We pay for the first test for our students, you know, which is a, you know, sort of a, on the theme of equity that Ms. Anderson's made the, made the hallmark of her presidency to date. You've established partnerships. We had a partnership with Middlesex County College. That has grown to Kane University, NJIT, Monmouth, Rutgers, Syracuse Universities. You all made that happen. We often, the, the in vogue word in education today is STEM or STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. When I started here on the board, we had the S, the T, and the M. We didn't have engineering. You made engineering happen in all three high schools. And I know, Mr. Tambarella, that was very important in MS, as a civilian engineer yourself. You not only focused on the college prep aspect of our school district, very near and dear to me is the vocational technical aspect. Not every child belongs or should go to college. Some students are just learned differently. So you implemented very early on with Abdul Haseem Hassan from Wilbur's High School, the Wilbur's JROTC Army Program. You and Mr. Bader worked on partnerships with career technical schools for diesel mechanics. We pay for students to learn how to become diesel mechanics or health assistants. We're learning, you know, actual trades for students who choose not to go to college. On the extracurricular side of things, we all, and Dr. Zaga, you know, as our CEO, made this happen along with Mayor McCormick and the council, in terms of helping us pay for athletic and art facilities that are really second to none in this state of New Jersey. And we're really proud to have those facilities. We all made that happen. And you, as the voters, especially helping us pay for that. Even before the pandemic hit, we had a one-to-one device for eighth graders through 12th graders. So when the pandemic hit, we were ready. It was one of the things that Governor Murphy, I think, got beat up, among many things this year, unfortunately. You know, he had many challenges on his plate. One of the things school districts got beat up for was not being prepared with all their students having a device and learning from home. We had no such problem because of us and you, Dr. Zaga. What I most admired about you was your openness to my ideas. I had many, those late-night Sunday emails that you received, along with every board president receiving my crazy list of emails. You were always very open and receptive. I sometimes felt as the youngest member of the board that I would get the short shrift, the lack of respect, but that never happened. Despite our many debates, we had many. I cursed you out many a times behind you, behind your back, not necessarily to your face. We, we had our debates, and you always remained professional, respectful, and I always appreciated that, you know. But when I say the cursing part, it wasn't that bad. Sometimes you just, you know, here and there, we didn't get, we didn't get along.
You can't take that back. It's on the record.
And I'm sure there are some times on your way home from a committee meeting, you thought the same about me, and that's more than fair. As superintendent, the largest, eighth-largest school district in the state of New Jersey, what I, what I also admired about you, and Dr. Massimino, I know this will probably be something that you will carry on, because I know you're that kind of guy, is when someone comes up to their microphone, a parent typically has a complaint, a question, a concern, Dr. Zaga says, call me, email me tomorrow morning. That, you know, you're the CEO of the largest employer in Wilbur Township, 2,000 employees, nearly 2,000 employees, and you say, call me. I don't, I don't see that every day in my line of work. So I want to thank you for that level of customer service that you brought. And I remember, one of the things you said when you became superintendent was that our students are our customers, if you will, and along with that are, are their parents. And you always put students and parents first from a customer service perspective, and I appreciated that. To the school that receives you next year, you know, I know there was, there was a question, and I know after tonight, there'll be even more. Where are you going? I could tell you, for wherever Dr. Zaga goes, you are getting a top-notch principal, and you're getting someone who knows, after eight and a half years of running a school district, he knows how to get things done. And he's a leader, and I've seen it. When you look at him, he's big, he's tall, he's buff. You know, you probably think, you know, oh, he's sort of intimidating or something of that nature. And I could tell you, from countless committee meetings, he's, he's an easygoing, good guy, and he often thinks about the impact on kids. So if you're an elementary school parent out there, and you're worried that he might be your principal next year for whatever reason, I assure you, you're getting a guy, a person who's going to put your child first, because I've seen it. I've seen it over the past eight years. So I think that, that about wraps up my, my remarks. I, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I was caught off guard, and I thought, you know what? It's not his last meeting. And I didn't think it was, it was appropriate then to jump in off the cuff and say anything. I wanted to put thoughts on paper. I'm proud of what you've done, proud of what we've done, all of us have done together, and I wish you well in the next chapter. I know you're going to be a better principal in your, the second time around. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Molnar?
Mr. Harris, that was a phenomenal assessment of, you know, Dr. Zaga, Dr. Zaga's tenure as superintendent of schools. Just a story, kind of to go on what you had said. I remember when I first got on the board, one of the first things in personnel that came up, I guess the principal at School 25 that time had gone out on a medical leave with a back injury, and we needed to put a principal to fill in, and Dr. Zaga's name came up. And I remember sitting in personnel, and I remember Judy Leiner saying, at the time, board member Leiner saying, how are we going to put him there? He's a high school VP. The kids are going to be scared out of their boots when he comes in. But we put Dr. Zaga there at School 25, and he did a phenomenal job. And when you think about it, we had the first bond referendum at that time, and you served over that bond referendum, connecting the pods that were once there that now we closed the whole building. You know, you oversaw that. And that was the first time that, we couldn't even pass a budget in those days, never mind a bond referendum. That was hysterical when that, historical, I should say, hysterical that it passed, because we're all sitting back there in the public. I was in the public at the time. I had gotten elected right after it. They were like, there's no way this is going to pass, because you couldn't even pass a regular budget. And it passed. The community did a great job coming together. I remember the Cubs were formed at that time, Citizens United for Better Schools. And the laugh was on me. The bond referendum passed. And you did a phenomenal job, like I said, over that construction. From there, you moved on to Colonial High School. You went there, and then Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. And the one thing I will remember, when we had the, the district was in a dark time with the cheating. At that time, staff morale was bad. They felt they were bullied. It was just a bad state for the district. But I remember sitting in on the interviews for superintendent, and when you came in, every other candidate was talking about the test score, the test score, the test score. And I'm sitting there thinking to myself, the
Later, in partnership with the board and the administration and the mayor and the township, we made it happen through the March 2017 referendum that you as the public and everyone up here truly voted for. That resulted in not only full day kindergarten with a new school building and the acquisition of St. Cecilia's building, but also the first new school building for the first time in 49 years. And then many other, many other things came of that as well, including the 1911 Woodbridge Middle School, which was fully rehabilitated and spectacular school today. That was a $60 million referendum. You helped shepherd. Three years later, you shepherded another referendum, this time a little higher in weight, about $89 million. Again, in partnership with our friends in Town Hall, we made that happen. Another new elementary school will be built, two large additions. I mentioned one earlier this evening. Pods being connected, technology, security, HVAC, you name it, a dozen or so additional projects, including STEM. Something, I mostly focus on buildings and grounds and finance, you know, are my passion, but we never lose sight of the fact that we're here to educate our 13,000, 700 students. So I want to rattle off some of the accomplishments you've had in the areas of curriculum. And these are just a few of many. You've increased eight advanced placement participation scores as well have gone up. We pay for the first test for our students, you know, which is a, you know, sort of a, on the theme of equity that Ms. Anderson has made the hallmark of her presidency to date. You've established partnerships. We had a partnership with Middle Smith County College. That has grown to Kane University, NJIT, Monmouth, Rutgers, Syracuse Universities. You all made that happen. We often, the in vogue word in education today is STEM or STEAM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. When I started here on the board, we had the S, the T, and the M. We didn't have engineering. You made engineering happen in all three high schools. And I know, Mr. Tamburello, that was very important, MS, as a civilian engineer yourself. You not only focused on the college prep aspect of our school district, very near and dear to me is the vocational technical aspect. Not every child belongs or should go to college. Some students are just learn differently. So you implemented very early on with Abdul Haseem Hassan from Woodbridge High School, the Woodbridge JROTC Army Program. You and Mr. Bader worked on partnerships with career technical schools for diesel mechanics. We pay for students to learn how to become diesel mechanics or health assistants or learning, you know, actual trades for students who choose not to go to college. On the extracurricular side of things, we all and Dr. Zega, you know, as our CEO, made this happen along with Mayor McCormick and the council in terms of helping us pay for athletic and art facilities that are really second to none in this state of New Jersey. And we're really proud to have those facilities. We all made that happen. And you as the voters especially helping us pay for that. Even before the pandemic hit, we had a one-to-one device for eighth graders through 12th graders. So when the pandemic hit, we were ready. It was one of the things that Governor Murphy, I think, got beat up among many things this year, unfortunately. You know, he had many challenges on his plate. One of the things school districts got beat up for was not being prepared with all their students having a device and learning from home. We had no such problem because of us and you, Dr. Zega. What I most admired about you was your openness to my ideas. I had many, those late night Sunday emails that you received along with every board president receiving my crazy list of emails. You were always very open and receptive. I sometimes felt as the youngest member of the board that I would get the short shrift, the lack of respect, but that never happened. Despite our many debates, we had many, I cursed you out many a times behind you, behind your back, not necessarily to your face. We had our debates and you always remained professional, respectful, and I always appreciated that, you know. But when I say the cursing part, it wasn't that bad. Sometimes you just, you know, here and there, we didn't get along, you know?
You can take that back. It's on the record.
And I'm sure there are some times on your way home from a committee meeting, you thought the same about me, and that's more than fair. As superintendent, the largest, eighth largest school district in the state of New Jersey, what I also admired about you, and Dr. Massimino, I know this will probably be something that you will carry on because I know you're that kind of guy, is when someone comes up to their microphone, a parent typically has a complaint, a question, a concern, Dr. Zega says, call me, email me tomorrow morning. That, you know, you're the CEO of the largest employer in Woodbridge Township, 2,000 employees, nearly 2,000 employees, and you say, call me. I don't see that every day in my line of work. So I want to thank you for that level of customer service that you brought. And I remember one of the things you said when you became superintendent was that our students are our customers, if you will, and along with that are their parents. And you always put students and parents first from a customer service perspective, and I appreciated that. To the school that receives you next year, you know, I know there was a question and I know after tonight, there'll be even more. Where are you going? I could tell you for wherever Dr. Zega goes, you are getting a top-notch principal and you're getting someone who knows after eight and a half years of running a school district, he knows how to get things done and he's a leader and I've seen it. When you look at him, he's big, he's tall, he's buff, you know, you probably think, you know, oh, he's sort of intimidating or something of that nature. And I could tell you from countless committee meetings, he's an easygoing, good guy, and he often thinks about the impact on kids. So if you're an elementary school parent out there and you're worried that he might be your principal next year for whatever reason, I assure you, you're getting a guy, a person who's going to put your child first because I've seen it. I've seen it over the past eight years. So I think that about wraps up my remarks. I, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I was caught off guard and I thought, you know what, it's not his last meeting. And I didn't think it was appropriate then to jump in off the cuff and say anything. I wanted to put thoughts on paper. I'm proud of what you've done, proud of what we've done, all of us have done together, and I wish you well in the next chapter. I know you're going to be a better principal in your, the second time around. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Mollin.
Mr. Harris, that was a phenomenal assessment of, you know, Dr. Zega's tenure as superintendent of schools. Just a story, kind of to go on what you had said. I remember when I first got on the board, one of the first things in personnel that came up, I guess the principal at School 25 that time had gone out on a medical leave with a back injury and we needed to put a principal to fill in, and Dr. Zega's name came up. And I remember sitting in Personnel and I remember Judy Leiner saying, at the time, Board Member Leiner saying, how are we going to put him there? He's a high school VP. The kids are going to be scared out of their boots when he comes in. But we put Dr. Zega there at School 25 and he did a phenomenal job. And when you think about it, we had the first bond referendum at that time and you served over that bond referendum connecting the pods that were once there that now we closed the whole building. You know, you oversaw that and that was the first time that, we couldn't even pass a budget in those days, never mind a bond referendum. That was hysterical and historical, I should say, hysterical that it passed because we're all sitting back there in the public. I was in the public at the time. I had gotten elected right after it. They were like, there's no way this is going to pass because you couldn't even pass a regular budget. And it passed. The community did a great job coming together. I remember the Cubs were formed at that time, Citizens United for Better Schools, and the laugh was on me, the bond referendum passed. And you did a phenomenal job, like I said, over that construction. From there, you moved on to Colonial High School. You went there and then Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. And the one thing I will remember, when we had the, the district was in a dark time with the cheating. At that time, staff morale was bad. They felt they were bullied. It was just a bad state for the district. But I remember sitting in on the interviews for superintendent and when you came in, every other candidate was talking about the test score, the test score, the test score. And I'm sitting there thinking to myself, the test score got us into this position, why we were making a change at the superintendent's level. And that's when you had come in and you were like, why don't we teach the students the curriculum instead of just teaching the test? And I kind of felt the same way. I think a lot of times, parents put so much stock into a test score. At the end of the day, you know, there's going to be three high schools graduating seniors. That's what this is about. And you had said that, the end game, where are they going to school? When they apply to the university, they're not going to care what they got on their NJ S. It's what did they get on their SAT? How are they going to perform in school? So I just, you were the man for the time because you brought that new perspective to this district, what this district needed. And like Mr. Harris said, I don't think anybody fear that, you know, what a move is going to be made with the principal. I get it, there's apprehension. I've been on this board since 2005 and I've sat in at a lot of meetings where parents will just pop in out of the blue. There's a rumor, because that's what Woodbridge is, Woodbridge is a lot of rumors, that, well, I heard you're taking the principal out of my school. No, we don't do that arbitrarily. And I know there's relationships between the principals and the PTOs and the staff and everything, and I get that. But whatever school you go to, Dr. Zega, trust me, they will be a better school for it. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your friendship, and I look forward to working with you as we move on to the next chapter.
So I just want to share a story about Dr. Zega and his commitment to our students. I came to him with the idea for the prom dress giveaway. And not only did he go with the idea, but he decided to be a member of our committee. And so he was giving us input, he helped us get a venue, and here we are talking about dresses, shoes, and all these different things, and Dr. Zega is right along with us. And I truly appreciate that because that event impacted so many families and it was something we've never done before and you were willing to take the risk with me. And so I just truly appreciate that effort that you put in for that event. And of course, when we had to put the Equity Commission together, when we had that idea, you know, after, you know, the events that happened in our country, and he was 100% on board, that you recognized that there was a need and that there was work to be done in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I just want to say thank you so much for your service. And again, I do look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Dr. Zega?
When I accepted the position of superintendent of Woodbridge Schools eight years ago, I stated that I would not let you down. I truly believe that during these past eight years, my administration and the Board of Education have worked together to improve our school district exponentially in all areas, from academics, finances, facilities, communication, technology, athletics, and organizational structure. Woodbridge Schools are in a much better place than they were when I took over. I am confident in stating that I did not let you down. I want to thank the Woodbridge Township Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to lead our school district for eight years. I'm fortunate and blessed to have the support of so many hardworking people throughout the district. The overwhelming success of the district is a result of that support and of the dedication of so many people. Being the superintendent of the eighth largest school district in New Jersey is a daunting and sometimes overwhelming task. I have never worked harder than I have as superintendent, especially during the COVID crisis. I promise to continue to work just as hard in the future and to remain dedicated to the students and families of Woodbridge Township. Thank you again for your faith in me. This concludes the eulogy, so we can move on to the rest of the meeting.
We will now open the meeting for the public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. For those residents unable to attend tonight's meeting in person, you may email your comments
If I can take just a second before you start the clock because it's not related to the questions, I just want to recognize Dr. Zega and Mr. Tamburello for their service. Certainly know Mr. Tamburello, we've been competitors of time for board position. And Dr. Zega, I've worked with you several times and I've always found you to be a consummate professional, very helpful. We disagreed on things, but when we did, it was in a professional and productive manner. And I thank you very much and I certainly appreciate the service that you have given our community and I'm sure you continue to do wonderful things for children in education. Thank you. And to my own agenda for this evening, there's a couple of things I'd like to discuss. I had brought up at the last meeting, the Silver Oaks Project and the development of the new school over there and some contamination. I'm not going to dwell on that right now because I have further information coming from the township. But what I would like to know is generally, if there is a problem with the site that the school is looking at, would not someone in the school district be responsible as the interface between the entities that are involved in that? That is a question. And if so, who would that individual be or individuals to interface with, either the developer and/or, in this case, it would be the Woodbridge Township? That's question number one. Number two is very, very quick. Gets back to mask wearing, I mentioned it before. Does the school district provide masks for the children and/or any assistance for parents having to buy them? Because as we know, most medical professionals say that they should be changed frequently as to not incur any bacteria growing within the mask and perhaps causing bacterial infections within child's lungs. That's another question. Question on the Equity Commission Committee. When was that formed? Who sits on that committee? How were those committee members selected? Also, as far as the Equity and Commission is concerned, last meeting, it was brought to my attention that there was a job description put out for new director to handle equity diversion. Has that individual been hired at this point in time? If so, who is that individual and how many other applicants did apply for that position? And lastly, in the description itself, where you talk about, in the job description, that is, this person being responsible, I guess, for coordinating and organizing and ensuring that the children will be taught racial equality, not equality, I'm sorry, that's one of the problems, racial equity and justice, also into diversity. Exactly how do you define each one of those terms in that job position? If you're not sure of what I'm asking, I'm basically saying is it's diversity, define diversity, define equity, and define inclusion in very specific terms. Thank you.
So the first question about the site, I'm going to go to Ms. Blackburn.
At this juncture, the attorneys are working in order to be able to bring the pieces together.
The mask question, Dr. Zega?
Yes, we have extra masks in the classroom, but early on, we decided that the mask is more of a personal item for the students and at this point, everybody has a mask at home. So it's rather than trying to give the students masks that may be uncomfortable, we asked all the students to bring in their own mask. We do supply masks for the staff, but as far as the students goes, especially the younger ones, we thought that that was a little bit too much of a personal choice.
If I may, do you set the standard for that mask? In other words, the specification, or are they free to bring in whatever they choose?
The one ply gaiters, to answer your question, yes, we set the standard.
And a broader question, to me, the more important one, is this diversity, the CRT, if you will.
So the next question was about the Equity Commission, who sits on the Equity Commission?
Yes.
So the Equity Commission is a committee of the board. So the board members, we have Mr. Trebizer is the chair of the commission, we have Mr. Sedana, Mr. Velez, Mr. Ali, Mr. Sakadato, Dr. Zega, and Dr. Massimino are the members of the Equity Commission, which was formed in the summer of 2020.
And yourself, Madam President.
And myself as the president, I sit on all the committees, so I am a member of that committee as well. The Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, tonight on the Personnel Agenda, we appointed Mr. Kandal Ali. You asked how many applicants applied for the position. I'm going to ask Dr. Massimino to answer that question.
Madam President, there were 14 applicants.
Thank you. Now, your question about the job description, you went back and forth. So you wanted me to answer what does diversity, equity, and inclusion? Or do you have a specific question on the job description that you'd like to be answered?
I think answering the one, if you define what your idea, as far as moving forward with putting this into a curriculum, what is your definition of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
As far as putting it into the curriculum or just a broad definition?
Well, I'd like to be as narrow and as specific as to what diversity means, what equity means, and inclusion means to this board, since it's going to be stating or incorporating it into the curriculum. As you know, I'm sure that there's a lot of discussion going on throughout the country right now where states are actually going together, it's not just individual parents, but states, standing up and challenging CRT, which this is certainly part of, diversity, equity, and inclusion, at least to my thinking and the thinking of a lot of others, would be a subheading of CRT. So that's why I'm looking for the clarification of exactly what you consider to be diversity, equity, and inclusion.
The time is up, actually. The, I'm trying to, you want me to just give a broad answer to what diversity? It's not something that we can just define for the district as saying, this is what it represents. So I want you to be able to...
Well, you hired a person to do that now. This new individual is going to be your director. Exactly how are they going about defining what is going to be taught under diversity?
So that's what it is. It's about what's going to be taught.
What is equity? That's what I'm asking. What is equity? What is inclusion and what is diversity?
I'll go to Dr. Zega to answer the question, what's going to be...
So to answer your question, it's going to depend on the level. We've been teaching things like in our character curriculum, how students need to recognize that the similarities between us as well as the differences that don't make people better or worse. So this is something that's been going on. We're going to put more of an emphasis on it. But as far as equity goes, equity is looking, what we want to do is remove any barriers to student success. For example, again, before the commission was started, we did ethnicity audits in our school. For example, we'd look at, we'd get a racial breakdown of students who are in our AP classes, students who are on our rolls, students who are in our top 20. And the ethnic makeup of those groups should be similar to the ethnic makeup of the school. And when we see a disparity there, that's something that we would begin a conversation about, well, why don't we have so many students? Or why don't we have so many students of color in our AP enrollment, things like that. We also look at our discipline records and we see if there's anything, what the data shows us, if there's anything we need to take a look at as far as there should be equal distribution proportionally to the population of the school. For example, I know Woodbridge High School does a wonderful job. If you look at their APs, if you look at their top 20s, it is a true reflection of the ethnic makeup of our school. But to that point, many of our schools are vastly different ethnically. Woodbridge High School is, I believe, about 45% Hispanic, whereas Island is about 45% Asian Indian, and Colonial is about 45% white. So we're not looking for equality, we're looking for an equal distribution. So these things we've been doing. Another big portion of equity is giving students voice, and that's something that we started and we've done, we've done the groundwork in this area, but there's a great deal that needs to be done. There's more work that needs to be done. If you've been to any of the demonstrations and you hear the students speak out about their experiences in high school and they had nowhere to go to kind of resolve these feelings that they had, and that as a professional educator, that's something that bothers me, that hurts me, that we didn't provide these students a voice or a venue to bring these issues forward. That's what the commission is doing. And I might add that in addition to the Equity Commission, that is, on a district level, at each school, we have an equity team and a diversity council that includes students, staff, and parents. And they look at and they have conversations and they try and solve problems about the specific issues in the school. So it is a comprehensive plan to develop these ideas. But I think you're referring to CRT. CRT is not something that's included in those plans.
I'm sorry, your time was up.
I appreciate your comments. I'm sure we're going to be having a lot more discussion on this. I'm sure other parents are going to be looking at exactly how this comes out in a curriculum and what input the public is going to have in that curriculum. Thank you very much for your time. And again, Dr. Zega, I wish you all the best. Thank you.
John Vitari, Woodbridge again. Dr. Zega, I'm going to tell you something you probably don't know, but my son Kevin, it was you admiring. Whatever I mentioned, Woodbridge Schools and it builds, that was Dr. Zega. Whatever you did to him, you inspired him, you made him private what he is today. Of course, my daughter Christine, again, she followed brother Kevin and Dr. Zega, always comes with Dr. Zega, Dr. Zega. Whatever you did to those kids, but they're doing good. And Christine, Kevin is in Pennsylvania, Christine is in Belgrade or Serbia, she was U.S. Embassy, State Department. And again, what you did, God bless you, you did good for my kids and you did good for most of the people in Woodbridge Township, all of you. Ezio over there, admired him, man, from day one. I remember when he was honored to be an Italian-American, and he probably remembers that, we took, went through a lot of good times, things like that, but Danny over there, everybody else, people do good, what you go to. But let's go again now, what Tom was just talking about it. Myself was immigrant. And by doing what you're doing, that you are actually signaling to certain people, different color, different religion, different things, everyone is different. We cannot, this United States, United States people, country already recognize it, no country in the world has all that kind of saturation of different people. It starts at home. We know our levels when we come here. Other than you can expect something from immigrant student that was born in foreign country, an American-born immigrant, second generation, to be the same. It's so hard for an immigrant to come here and be expected to reach the level like a people born over here. It takes time. But again, it starts at home. Give us a time, give people a time to do themselves. This is America, everyone got a chance. I don't think you can do in a school, Woodbridge or any other school, one single school, to change the United States, world, people. People will find themselves, you know, you know, what it finds its level, people will too. To us interfere the way that people want to live, respect each other, you know, then you talk about religion, you talk about the politics, you talk about everything else. Just give them education. Don't try to signal them what nationality, what color, what they're there. We all know who's what, they know who they are, what they are, what's going to be. And again, I think maybe other cities or states do do the same thing, I don't know. But I don't think we should be involved to that, to change the population because look at on the street, they're all beautiful people. They don't look themselves, what race, what color, what religion, they're just kids. It's the parents. Whatever kids are, they're not born that way, they're made that way. So if you're going to signal people, oh, this immigrant is black, is white, is what you call it, I don't think it's right for the school to do. Just educate them. Give them education, give them opportunities like you do to be somebody, like my kids. You know, my daughter's back in Europe now and I'm immigrant from Yugoslavia, which is now Serbia, and she worked with Steady Five. You know how proud it makes me that my child, when I was kicked out... when I was kicked out because of communism, they wasn't good enough because we agree for politics, and my child is over there representing the United States? Because what happened? You know, when I talked to her, I said, Christine, do I speak with the accent? Oh, no, you don't do that. I do, I know I do. But again, I don't think that we should be involved in this kind of situations, like we were talking before. Just teach them, like anybody, to be educated, and let them take pick what they want to be. But don't tell them who they are, what they are, what they should be. They're going to find their own level. Let's change a little bit. I don't want to take too much time. But again, Dr. Zaga, in eight years that you are superintendent, congratulations, you did a great job, all the challenges. I always ask, what's the student population of Woodbridge Township? And I always look at the same figures, 13,000, 3500, 30,500 students. In eight years' time, how much did the students' population increase in Woodbridge Township?
Dr. Zaga?
Madam President, Mr. Vatarik, I don't know exactly.
Well, not exactly. I'm talking about hundreds of thousands, different thousands, 100.
To be honest, it hasn't changed a whole lot in the past five years. It's been pretty level.
I understand. How can we build in bigger schools than, how can we build all the stuff? There's no more...
Because the schools are 100 years old, and there's no room in the classroom.
Size, the bigger schools, more rooms, more, you know. I talked to teachers in Maggiagogo, not Maggiagogo, but Maggiagogo School, how many students they got? I said, oh, 23. I said, well, that's, last year, they had 23. So now, but now, they're two classrooms, they got three classrooms.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
I did have one announcement I forgot to announce, which I'm actually very happy about. Today, President Biden signed the bill officially making Juneteenth a federal holiday. This holiday commemorates the day when the last enslaved African-Americans in the U.S. learned that they were free. Tonight, the board adopted a resolution recognizing this historical significance of Juneteenth. So I also like to share that there will be a Juneteenth festival, a celebration of freedom here in Woodbridge Township, sponsored by Walnok and Wally, and it'll be Saturday from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM at Woodbridge High School outside. And if you want more information, you can contact Diana Davis at 848-459-7723. With that, the chair will enter, entering a motion to adjourn.
Submotion?
I have a motion by Mr. Monarch, seconded by Mr. Trebizer. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.